Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda, any changes, additions?
No motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Meister. Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Adoption of minutes from February 24, 2025. Any questions, concerns? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross that the regular meeting minutes of February 24, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Delegations.
Yeah, so we have some members of staff.
Thank you. We have a delegation from the Livingston Range School Division here tonight, members of staff and the board to meet with council.
Perfect.
So whoever's the spokesperson here?
Lord Hodges Board Chair, I just want to say we really appreciate you reaching out to us and being able to come present to you tonight. And hopefully this is an ongoing thing and be able for collaboration and maybe potential partnership on things. So I'm not going to take up too much time because we only have 15 minutes. So I'd like to call up the other presenters to join me up here.
I was going to say, you all by yourself?
Oh, no.
Good evening, everyone. Is that on? Okay. I'm Daryl Seglin, Superintendent for Livingston Range School Division. Brought with me several people. We're going to just scratch the surface of the types of programming that we've got available here in Clare's Home for the kids in this area. But if you want any more information, certainly feel free to bring us back or to schedule a meeting another time where we can go into things in a little more detail. But it's going to kind of be a whirlwind. And I'll turn some time over to Shay right now, who is the principal at West Meadow Elementary School. So Shay Mallow.
Thanks, Daryl. So Daryl asked us just to do an overview of some projections for our student population for next year, which you'll see right now I have estimated at 315 students. And Daryl asked, oh, why the drop? Well, since we put these numbers in, six students have joined the school. So we know that, you know, ebbs and flows quite a bit, but that was based off of the projections that we had. We have a large grade six class going out. Kindergarten, we're really unsure, but we do, we have a very large registration right now in kindergarten. So this is kind of the breakdown that we're hoping for, for our classes for next year. We are a leader in me school, and we are kind of revising and readjusting how our staff approaches leadership culture and academics. But generally, we use this framework to organize student groups as well as staff groups, and it really provides a great structure for us to ensure that we maintain our focus on these three key areas. And one of the goals we've had, I just started at the beginning of December, one of the goals that we've had is to enhance our relationships and partnerships throughout the community. And in only a few months, we see that building. We have some enhanced connections with FCSS, a lot of communication shared through a new newsletter that we have. And Starla Adler and I are speaking a lot about the initiatives they have and hoping to partner more than just sharing information, but continuing to partner along the way, making sure families know that FCSS provides proactive services and opportunities for families. It's not a reactive, like once you're in trouble, then we'll send you to those services. That FCSS has just an amazing plethora, you know, of things to provide. So we'll continue with that partnership. Have just started some deeper connections with the Clare's Home Public Library and what they provide families. And recently welcoming Clare's Home, I believe it's called. We've been in more connection with some of the people in charge of that as well. So we're continuing to build those partnerships, making sure that the community knows our doors are wide open, and we actually are really looking forward to deepening a lot of those relationships with partners in the community. We have a new initiative at the school called the Wow Wall. It's going really, really well, where staff can nominate students for knocking out of the park in anything, growth, achievement, setting goals, achieving goals, being a good friend, mastering math facts, all of those things. They're nominated Monday morning, we put their picture on the Wow Wall. I send a positive email to parents, some in this room who have received some, saying your kid's doing amazing. We have an assembly the last Friday of every month, and there we celebrate students and we have fun together. It's going really, really well to build some culture in our school. And through that, we have a lot of support across town of Clare's Home has provided our last Wow Wall swag bags for three lucky recipients, MLH, Lacey Petrovic, Santana Tom, Berry Patch Jiu-Jitsu. Tried to say that one a few times. We have had tremendous support from Meadow Creek, Meadow Lake, Meadow, the sausage and meat here in town. And we've had other calls recently as well with people who are kind of hearing about it and really want to celebrate students with us. So that's going really well. Student programming, we've had through the Clare's Home Aquatic Center, the junior hockey club has reached out, MD of Willow Creek, we have some experiences with them, and some enhanced partnership with the Clare's Home Community Singers and our own choir. So those are a few highlights of bridges and partnerships we're hoping to continue to build.
All right. While they change places a little bit, I'm going to invite Robert Rogers, Principal of Willow Creek Compost at High School, to come up and just share a little bit about WCCHS.
Thanks, Daryl. So those are our projections, well, those are our enrollments over the last five years. Our projection for next year is to stay pretty stable as to what we are this year. So when we look at our projections, we have 340 students projected for next year, but our enrollment numbers include our international students. And so typically Clare's Home takes a high number of those students because of the billet situation here. We're very fortunate to have a number of families that are willing to participate in that program. And so typically, we have between 15 and 20 international students each year that join our student body. And so we expect that our enrollment next year will stay fairly static to what it was this year. Some of the highlights of our programs here in our school, certainly our vocational programs that we have at the comp are exceptional for a school this size. We enjoy opportunities with our shop that has mechanics, welding, and woodworking. We have a cosmetology lab, which is certainly an addition that most schools our size wouldn't have. And then, of course, our commercial kitchen and our foods program, and then we have an extensive art program. And so we're very fortunate to have those elective programs. And for some students, they're not electives because that's where their careers are headed. And so we're fortunate to have those programs. One of the other additions that we've tried to foster over the last four years has been our Flight Academy. And so we work with the CFI Flight School in town here. It's been a bit of a bumpy road because we struggle with our insurance through the school division to let kids actually fly an airplane. And so ground school is good, but for some reason, insurance company doesn't like kids to drive airplanes. So we have found a model this year that actually works to where students can actually get into the airplane and begin to collect their flight hours. And so it's how we register them and where the money flows. And so we've worked out an agreement with CFI to where in the first year, students will register through the high school, and that's when they do their ground school work. And then in the second and third years, they register directly with the Flight School. And so because funds are going directly to the Flight School, they earn credits through submitting their flight reports to us. And so it's a way for us to have the registration for the flying go directly to the Flight School. So we're hoping that over the next couple of years, we can grow that program as we're able to start to advertise that kids can actually fly in the Flight School. So that's a benefit.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. He's going to switch out with Rob Charchin. Rob is one of our off-campus teachers, mostly here in the, well, Fort MacLeod North, I think. But Rob will talk to you a little bit about some of the off-campus programming that we have in the jurisdiction.
Hi. Three basic kinds of off-campus program. One is work experience. And work experience has two fundamental paths. I can place a student in work experience, I could place them in one of businesses that you own or operate. And Livingston Range School Division through the province would bring, provide insurance in case of any kind of worksite hazard, accident, that sort of thing. But, you know, that's fairly rare, but that's what we do. And then I supervise and student monitoring, make sure everything's going okay. And that could last for 75 hours, or 125 hours, or 250 hours, or more. All depends. And then another way students can do work experience is to place themselves. So in other words, they could get a job, and then they can call me, or their parents can call me and say, does this fit for work experience? And if it fits, and how do we decide if it fits? Basically, if the student is well-supervised and I can file a detailed report saying that they're learning and they're safe, then generally qualifies. That's work experience. The other program we do is RAP, Registered Apprenticeship. That's with the province of Alberta with AIT, that's apprenticeship, industry and technology. And students can earn apprentice-able hours in the trades. We have a couple of students doing that. We have anywhere between two, four, six of them at any given time from Willow Creek School. So we've got two doing that right now. And me and Mr. Rogers might talk about their programming and maybe let them out of a class that's not a core class, like, say, cooking or art, so that they can go and get extra time, not just after school and weekends. And then, of course, they can do it all through the summer. And then the last part of the program, off-campus programming, has to do is green certificate. And that probably not taking place in town, but it's taking place just outside of town. That's where students study agriculture, and it's apprentice-like, it's not an apprenticeship, but it's like an apprentice. They call it apprentice-style learning. So students could be with family members, could be with Uncle Hank, could be with a local chicken producer, egg producer. They can be paid, not paid, but they study that agricultural stream. Here are some common examples just outside of town of Clare's Home. Cows and calves, feedlots, I said poultry, and equine. That's pretty common. And then there's this little thing that I eat every day, grain. And so students could study the grain business and get up to 18 high school credits, maybe get paid, maybe not get paid, but they're earning those credits, and they all go towards the high school diploma.
18 credits?
For green certificate.
Wow.
Yeah, for the apprentice program.
Yeah.
1,000 hours of apprenticeship equals 40 high school credits.
Nice.
It doesn't exempt them from math, social science, English, and phys ed.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And if we could move ahead, actually, two slides. Just wanted to make you aware of something. I'm not sure if you know this, but high school students in Alberta now can earn credits in high school, but at the same time, earn credits in post-secondary. And so we have partnerships throughout our school division, students taking courses from Lethbridge College and Olds College. In the package that I sent in earlier that you've got, there are lots of courses listed in there. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. But I did want to mention that that is another avenue for kids to earn credits towards their high school diploma. If we could go to the next slide. PEAKS Collegiate, you can see the acronym there. PEAKS Collegiate, we offer programs in junior high that are more exploratory, but then in high school, they can get on a career pathway. And PEAKS is really about environmental science pathways. And so its base is out in the Crow's Nest Pass, at the old or former tourist information center. But what we've done is we've designed this course, or these courses, through partnership with Lethbridge College, that the kids can do a lot of it virtually, and then they would come onsite for a week in the semester. But we also have a mobile environmental lab there, in that trailer, that we can haul around to any of our communities. And it's fully equipped with microscopes and hip waders and everything for them to get into the water and take the nets and be able to do some environmental studies and earn their credits towards a pathway in environmental science. If we go to the next slide, yeah, maybe we'll skip. Just in the interest of time, we'll go ahead to the next one. Another collegiate that we've got going on is the Southern Alberta Collegiate Institute. That's a partnership with all of those school divisions that are listed on the bottom. For those of you that might be familiar with Lethbridge College, Lethbridge Polytechnic now, and maybe visited the barn from time to time there, this is, that's where the site will be for this new collegiate institute. So Alberta Education has given funds to be able to develop the programs, and then also some startup funds to be able to develop the city, sorry, the physical facilities in partnership with the Lethbridge Polytechnic in both of our cases. And so this one here is really focused more on trades, agriculture, and health career pathways. And so the kids would register in grade 10, and they would get some introductory courses. And then as they go in grade 11 and 12, they narrow their focus a little bit more on that specific career path that they want to pursue. And so that's another option available to Livingston Range students. If we go ahead, these are other kind of courses that we offer our students across the jurisdiction that allow them to get some certifications so that they're ready for employment in different fields. So first aid, WMS, and then there's more specific ones if you're heading to the ski hill and that sort of thing with ski and snowboard instructing and avalanche training. And you can see the other ones up there, even trying to boost our officials, local officials, and get some basketball officiating in there. And the really neat thing is that with many of these courses, different agencies have stepped up and will provide a lot of the funding and even the instructor. And so we just have to get the kids there. It's a nominal fee for them to participate, but it's another way for them to start down a path and maybe just employment, part-time job, or get some pre-employment certifications that would allow them to move further into that field of work. Next slide, please. So on the right, you see, my time is up, so I will be quick here, but you can see the off-campus programming enrollment numbers in our school division on the left, and then Clare's Home's numbers are on the right. So for work experience, for example, Rob was talking about, 21 students in Clare's Home out of the 65 in the school division, 21 of those students participating in work experience are from Willow Creek Compost at High School. And you can see, he talked about RAP as well. Right now, there's two, whereas in the jurisdiction, we have 27 kids participating. Some of the collegiates there, you can see the numbers. And the pre-employment are low right now because a lot of the pre-employment courses were happening in second semester. And so the numbers there will pick up as the year goes on, but that's why. If we go to the last slide, some of the potential areas that we see could be partnerships that we would like to explore a little bit more with the community here in Clare's Home. And if you have desires, after you have an opportunity to digest this presentation and have desires to pursue it a little bit further with us, these are some areas that I think we could have some common ground to talk about. At times, we've had trouble recruiting staff to the Clare's Home area. When I was principal here at Willow Creek Compost at High School, that didn't seem to be an issue. But here we are eight years, well, sorry, 12 years later. 12 years later, I guess it has been already. And it's more of a concern for us now and getting more difficult to have teachers come out this way. Now, a lot of that has been due to the growth in the metro areas, for sure. Any teacher that's graduating from the teaching programs that wants to stay in the city often has that as a choice, right? And in the past, that wasn't always the case. But there are other things. The University of Lethbridge program is a very strong education program, and it used to be a lot of Southern Alberta kids would go into that program and then come back to Southern Alberta. But now, because the program is so good, kids are coming from all around the province and outside of the province, and then they're going back to those areas. So we're working with the Ministry of Education to expand the number of seats available for education in post-secondary, but that's, we'll work on that on that side. There are potential things, though, if you're interested, that we could work on from a community side. Also, we know that Clare's Home is a rural community immigration pilot program, and when newcomers come to Clare's Home, they often have children that come into the schools as well. So we would love to be involved with you and more conversation around that and really make sure it's a good experience for everyone involved. Robert mentioned the Flight Academy. We've kind of tried different things over the last few years. We think we have a more successful kind of path. And so if there's things that we could work together in that area, we would love to see that program grow here and be really attractive for students across our division to come and participate in that program as well. And then, as Rob Charchin mentioned, sorry, Robert and Rob, we have two students right now in Clare's Home with RAP placements out of, I think it was 27 or something like that. There's room to grow and for the Clare's Home kids to be able to take more advantage of the RAP programs. And we'd love to see if there's a way we could work together to enhance that so that more students in Clare's Home have some RAP opportunities. I apologize for going a few minutes over time, but that kind of concludes the presentation. I'm not sure if there's questions that either myself or any others could add, or if you'd like that to be another time.
How could we increase the RAP placement opportunities?
Rob, do you want to come back up and help with this one a little bit? So the question is around the RAP placement opportunities. What could happen?
Normally, I have four or five. Oh, yeah, sorry. Normally, I have, normally, we have four or five in Willow Creek, because it's just a little anomalous. I think by the end of this semester, we probably can have four or five, then we'll have some in the summer. And, yeah, so that's just a little bit anomalous. But in please, in the answer, the question, to increase, I work with a company called Careers Next Generation, and they help facilitate RAP placements. And right now, I just don't have that many students that are interested, but that could change. Yeah, it's just like, you know, it's just like enrollment in a hockey team. One year, you got 40 kids that want to play hockey, one year, you got 25. How did this happen? It's like that.
Yep. Yep. Perfect.
Good question.
Thank you. Questions?
Counsel Kettle?
Well, I have a little inside baseball in some of this, but I just want to say from the community point of view, I'm just so happy now that we're some years post-COVID that the schools are now starting to be able to get out and be back involved with the community, whereas, you know, they were necessarily, you know, a little bit insular. And the other piece, and it's kind of tied to it a little bit, is this community appreciates so much the vocational emphasis from the Compost, and being able to maintain that and encourage that, because the story over the years is that, you know, Willow Creek's, you know, taught half the welders in the community kind of thing. And we'd love for that to continue more and more as best we can. So that's, those would be my two comments. I'm happy that you guys are getting out and getting around again.
Thank you.
Counselor Meister?
I was just wondering if you wanted to touch briefly on the elections coming up and maybe kind of what you're looking for, yeah?
Love to have a minute to talk about that, right?
Yep. I actually brought a handout so that I will leave with you guys. There's 10 copies here, just kind of talking a little bit about how to become a school board trustee. And elections are, of course, October 20th. And so we'd like you to just, you know, spread the word within the community and just, maybe just show these pamphlets. If anybody wants any, they can come grab one, but it's on our website. They can click on the link, and then you can download the paper to, that you need to fill out in order to become a trustee. So, yeah, I was glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Perfect. We thank you very much. Very informative. I would like to see us work closer together about numerous things. So maybe a working group? Once every four months, or six months, or whatever, just to talk and try to work something out.
Sure. Yeah, we really appreciate that, and we're more than willing to be able to, you know, hopefully some partnerships and collaboration, and that's why we're here today, and, yeah, make our schools the best they can be.
Perfect.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Action items. Delegation response at COGAS.
So the ATCO franchise agreement renewal, or sorry, is up for renewal. And if you recall, ATCO representatives presented to council at the last meeting, giving an overview of the franchise agreement and detailed the main points of that agreement. In the renewal, there are a few updates and changes to the agreement. Little bit of background, the last agreement that council had with ATCO was signed in 2005, 20-year agreement now. And so a few of the changes, they did highlight that in the presentation, fairly similar agreement, but a few of the changes involving if the municipality wants to actually exercise its right to purchase the infrastructure, because that is one option at the time of renewal. There's some new processes in place for that, and basically goes to the utilities commissions. If the company and the town, if the town is looking to purchase and own the infrastructure, it would go to the utilities commission eventually, if they couldn't come to an agreement on what that purchase should look like. A bit more information about if the town annexes land, and it happens to annex land where there is an existing or a different provider. The idea there would be that the agreement would extend to that existing provider. And in the, I think this has happened with ATCO in other places, where they've had two different gas providers, for example, and it's been difficult for them. So there's some slight changes there. Basically, the agreement would extend to those existing, those other providers in the chance of an annexation. They did provide a map. Little Bowcast Gas Co-op is the closest, and it's still pretty far away, so it wouldn't really affect Clare's Home. But generally speaking, the agreement guarantees ATCO the right to have the franchise in town during the time of the agreement. It lays out, lays out expectations for how ATCO will manage their infrastructure, their gas infrastructure, and deliver gas to people's homes. How will they expand their networks, how they will also relocate their pipelines if required, and how they'll generally work with the town to service households with natural gas. Administration has done a review of the agreement. We don't have any pinch points or pressure points. With ATCO, they are an excellent service provider in town. So, yeah, council's options here are to, would be to renew the agreement or to potentially purchase at the time of renewal to purchase the infrastructure from ATCO. So they have asked council to make a few decisions. I'll review those decisions for you quickly here. One would be the term of agreement. How long is council interested in having another agreement? As I said, the previous one was 20 years. In speaking with ATCO staff, 10 to 20 years is the standard. They've recommended a 20-year. They cite easier administratively, so you're not coming back and doing these renewals. However, if you're doing it one every 10 years, that's not overly burdensome either, is it? So it's really up to council. Administratively, we're okay with doing another 20-year term. However, if council's more comfortable with a 10-year, that's fine, too. Adjusting the franchise fee, they have asked, this is one decision council needs to make, whether or not they want to adjust the franchise fee. Council did adjust it from 12% to 14% last September. And so administratively, recommending that council holds that, holds that percentage. And every year, it comes up for, in September time, it comes up for a decision from council anyways, whether or not they want to do that. So that would come up in about, what, six months' time here, I guess? So. And then finally, there's the linear tax, which is the tax on the infrastructure itself. whether or not they want to adjust the franchise fee. Council did adjust it from 12% to 14% last September. And so administratively recommending that council holds that, holds that percentage. And every year, it comes up for, in September time, it comes up for a decision from council anyways, whether or not they want to do that. So that would come up in about, what, six months' time here, I guess. So. And then finally, there's the linear tax, which is the tax on the infrastructure itself. The town does have a linear tax. Most towns have a linear tax. That's called rider B in the agreement. Rider A is the franchise fee that I was just speaking of. And council could remove that. There are some municipalities that don't have rider B. However, there would be a significant amount of tax revenue lost if that was canceled. And so we would recommend going back to rider A, which is the franchise fee, and adjusting that to make up those. So probably a bit of unnecessary work involved with that one, but we could look into it if council was interested. Not sure if there's anything else, but I think I covered most of it there.
Thank you. Questions? Concerns?
I just wanted to understand, is, when you sign it for 20 years, does it stay at 14% or do they increase it all?
So, what?
No.
So, yeah, that's usually a council decision every year. Sometime in September, we'll hear from them. And they'll ask us if, they'll ask council if they want to raise the franchise fee. Like I said, Claris Home is at 14%. The actual limit, upper limit that you can charge, it's regulated by the utilities commission, is 35%. And so it will come back every single year for council to make a decision on whether or not it wants to increase or hold the franchise fee or reduce it. Sometimes it gets reduced. And not long ago, the MD reduced the franchise fees in Granum, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Cutler?
I'll make the first motion to sign another 20-year franchise agreement.
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve a 20-year term franchise agreement with Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited.
Questions? Concerns? All in favor? Approved. Second motion to maintain Town of Claris Home's franchise fee at 14%. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll motion that. To maintain the Town Council franchise fees, Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited at 14%.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to maintain the Town of Claris Home's franchise fee with Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited at 14%.
All in favor? Approved. Town of Claris Home to continue collecting linear taxes from Atco Gas. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the Town of Claris Home continue to collect linear taxes from Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited via rider B for Atco Gas and Pipelines Limited.
All in favor? Approved.
So we'll update the, they've given us a template agreement. We'll put some of that, you have to have the franchise fee in there, some dates. And then this gets adopted, the agreement gets adopted by council by bylaw. So we'll bring a bylaw back at the next council meeting for that.
Thank you. Six-point B provincial government correspondence. Honorable Rick MacGyver. Abe?
So in May of 2024, the government passed something called the Provincial Priorities Act. And you may recall, last year, about a year ago now, we got some inquiries from Municipal Affairs asking what kind of, pardon me, my computer's acting up, asking what kind of agreements that our municipality had with the federal government. This was, this was the lead up to this conversation we're having right now. But essentially, the province has passed legislation that is going to require municipalities to have a review of all agreements that they enter in, municipalities enter in with the federal government. And so that extends beyond municipalities. It goes into regional service commissions, municipally-controlled corporations, library boards. And so all of those groups, which are creations ultimately of the province, now must run by their agreements that they have with the federal government through the province first and through the relevant minister. There are some exceptions. So if it's a non-monetary agreement, or if it's, I believe, under $100,000, that approval won't be required. However, the municipality must still send the agreement in to bring into the attention of the province. That requirement is still in place to let the province know what the municipality is doing. And the province is, their wording and their argument is in here, I hate to paraphrase, but they don't want, in their words, they don't want municipalities to be signing agreements that are not in line with their priorities. I guess that's probably a good summary of it. And so they're concerned with the federal government having agreements with municipalities that are running counter to provincial government priorities. And so that's why this is all coming about. So this is just an information for council.
This question came up at Edmonton. The minister pretty much avoided the question completely.
Why?
He said, "We'll deal with it by case by case." And that was it. He moved on to something else.
How many federal agreements do we have?
We do have one, which is the RSIP agreement.
Yeah.
But that, this legislation comes into, in effect, on April 1st, 2025, and we've already signed that agreement. So we're not going to be required to inform them. But there's that one. And could potentially, if we had to forward that along, there'd be some oversight from the province on that one, for sure. But however, it's, again, it's non-monetary. And according to what's been, what we've been told here, it would just be an information sharing for your information.
Right.
There's got to be some agreements. I'm just completely speculating because there's not a lot of details.
Yeah.
And maybe the council table is not the right place to speculate. But I suspect larger agreements with larger municipalities would be the primary concern with that $100,000 threshold.
Yeah. Counselor Kettles?
I think the other piece, and again, it probably won't affect any of our committees, but I mean, maybe if your government might need to buy a new van, I don't know where some of those agreements hit. But I know that our various committees are going to be less able to negotiate or navigate these waters than maybe we're even able to. So I don't know how we kind of facilitate that sharing information. Or I guess we got to understand it ourselves before we can pass it and make recommendations to our committees, but.
Yeah, I don't think we're ever meant to understand it, so.
Probably the government's way to get rid of red tape.
Yes, there we go.
I can see it happening.
Like certainly, like the Transportation Society is a good example. It's a good question. I hadn't thought of them. They are organized under the Societies Act, which technically is a creation of the province as provincial, I think it is provincial legislation. What they hit on, so I don't know about that one, but what they do hit on here would be like service commissions. So we've got our solid waste landfill. We've got ORSC planning, for example. Those are the two that would come to mind. But yeah, societies.
I agree with you, Counselor Kettles. That's my concern, is more paperwork and more understanding and more explanations to different levels of people that just, I don't understand why. That's, it just blows my mind.
Kind of like a petty argument between parents. It's kind of what it feels like.
Okay, I've got some other opinions, but I'll hold them to myself now.
Don't hold back. Red tape and politics. Fantastic.
I'll be quick. Last year, when they started inquiring about these, we were asking questions and we didn't get a lot of information when we asked those questions about why. And it's still a little bit vague, right?
Meant to be that way.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Six-point C. Other government correspondence. Municipal District of Willow
Six-B two.
Sorry, I missed one.
Yep.
Six-B, the budget.
So just information on the budget that has been tabled in the legislature and some highlights of that budget, a few takeaways in here. Highlighting the local government fiscal framework and the capital operating, particularly is going to be going up 13% this year as per the new funding structure. Municipalities will generally see a slight dip next year. They know two or three years out now, and so there will be a slight dip. But it is projected to go up again after that. So. A little bit of conversation on grants, grants in place of taxes. The G-Pot program, that was a big topic of discussion at the last Alberta Municipalities Conference. And there was some advocacy for municipalities to get that back. That got halved back in possibly 2018. And that is the grant that the province pays municipalities. They don't pay taxes to municipalities to grant. They pay in lieu of taxes. So that got halved. And I think we previously shared with you those numbers. Somewhere around $75,000 off the top of my head, that has not come to Claris Home since that change happened. This year, it will go up from 50% to 75% and supposed to be going up to 100% in 2026, 27. they giveth and they taketh away. So they have highlighted also that the Local Growth and Sustainability Grant, which was meant to assist communities alleviate pressures, infrastructure growth pressures, was a competitive grant that municipalities could apply to in the province. That was supposed to be in place for three years. It's canceled after its first year. And in theory, I guess, the money that's going to G-Pot is coming out of this grant. So. That's, I think, the big takeaway that I got out of that. Anything else from council?
They just reconfirmed in Edmonton that G-Pot was coming back. And they as much guaranteed it, I guess, right?
Pretty much. There should also be maybe an education piece that they're going to put some information out on the education tax that the province collects on behalf of, or the municipality collects on behalf of the province, so that people are aware that it's not us raising that part of the taxes.
Minister MacGyver told us to make sure your residents know this is a tax for Alberta, not Claris Home. We know because the money goes to Alberta and not Claris Home. Okay, done with that? No questions? Now we'll move on to six-point C. Municipal District of Willow Creek, Abe?
Yeah, we have some correspondence here from the MD of Willow Creek about a library board appointment recommendation. Under the bylaws of the library, the public library board, the town, because the library is located in town here, is actually the Town Council. That is, is the body that approves board appointments. And so one of the MD's appointee to that board, their term has expired, and they're asking council to approve Counselor Hemaway to the library board for another three-year term.
Questions? Concerns? I, yeah, nevermind. It's there. We don't have, we don't need a motion or nothing, do we?
Probably.
Yes, yep.
Fair enough. Could I get a motion?
I'll make that motion then to appoint Counselor Hemaway to the library board for an additional three-year term.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to reappoint Earl Hemaway to be a representative on behalf of the Municipal District of Willow Creek and the Claris Home Public Library Board.
All in favor? Six-point D. Local correspondence. Claris Home District, FCSS. Abe?
So the Claris Home District, FCSS is just having an invitation to council to attend their annual volunteer appreciation dinner and awards that is at the community center. This year's national volunteer week theme, Volunteers Make Waves, Together We Create Ripples of Change. And so the event is happening Tuesday, April 22nd. Doors open at 6:00. Introduction's at 6:15. Volunteer celebration from 6:30 to 8:00. And they are inviting the mayor to say a few words at this event as well.
Take it for information. Six-point D. Claris Home Social Center Society Letter of Support. Abe?
Yeah, sorry, I should just point out, they are asking for an RSVP. They are asking for an RSVP. So if anybody wants to go.
I think we're all capable of doing that.
What?
Of RSVPing ourselves.
No, they want to know if the mayor's going to come say some words.
No, they want to know if you're going. I'm not going if I have to talk again. I would just say that I might be gone that day.
Yeah, weird. Can you folks please contact Starlife if you're going to go?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. Abe?
I'm going.
Okay.
Everybody?
Okay.
Okay.
That's what, that's what Counselor Meister just.
I heard that.
I seen that email. I have to check. I don't know right now whether I can make it or not.
That's okay. If I have more warning, I will be able to fill in the shoes.
You did great last year.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Who else is going?
I'm going. I'll be helping you set up and everything, yeah, so.
I'll probably go this year.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Still have to contact Starla.
What you need?
That's great.
I'm going to talk to Starla.
Only if I get to sit beside Abe.
Okay, is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Claris Home Social Center Society Letter of Support. Abe?
Social Center is applying to the Community Foundation. They are looking for a new dishwasher, and the cost is $12,117. And so they're looking for a letter of support from council.
Question?
That's not a typo?
No.
A $12,000 dishwasher?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
It's industrial.
Commercial.
I thought somebody hit the one twice there in the middle. I literally did because I'm like, what's a $12,000 dishwasher? But they're just asking for a letter of support for that.
Yes, they are.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to write a letter of support for the Claris Home Social Center Society's application to the Community Foundation of Lethbridge in southwestern Alberta for the purpose of purchasing a new dishwasher to accommodate activities that require the kitchen at the Claris Home Social Center.
All in favor? Approved. Moving on. Request for decision. Intermunicipal Emergency Services Agreement Renewal. Abe?
So the town and the MD and the towns of Nanton, Staveley, and Fort McLeod have an intermunicipal emergency services agreement. First signed that back in 2020. We had a little amendment. twenty twenty, uh, we had a little amendment somewhere shortly after, a year or two into that, and we are now at the point, it's a five-year agreement, uh, that it, um, needs to be renewed. Uh, generally speaking, the, uh, the agreement works very well, and it lays out service levels, uh, for the region, for all the regional fire departments, um, and responsibilities for things like, uh, training, um, it organizes the, um, a couple of different boards, or at least the intermunicipal emergency services board, rather, um, and organizes, uh, dictates how often they need to meet to review the agreement, to ensure it's running properly, uh, covers, uh, cost sharing, uh, cost sharing for, um, the fire halls, um, and, uh, for example, the M.D. contributes to each fire hall in, in the region, uh, nine thousand dollars a year to assist with, uh, fixed operating costs. Um, it lays out a, a training schedule, and, and as I said, uh, it's, uh, service delivery standard, service standard schedule as well. So, uh, we have discussed this with council, uh, a, a couple of times, uh, all the other municipalities are in, in the process of, um, updating this agreement as well. A few changes that are coming in this new agreement, um, proposing to harmonize the wages for the fire departments, um, previously there were probably four or five different, uh, wage schedules in there, um, so we will harmonize, proposing to harmonize the, uh, the wages, establishing a junior firefighter program across the region, um, increase in annual fire har- hall operating cost support by the M.D. from nine thousand to twelve thousand a year. Uh, additionally, the M.D. will be contributing three thousand dollars a year to each hall or each community, uh, for the use of their, um, their town-owned command trucks, so each, each town has a fire chief or a volunteer fire chief, and they have a command truck. The M.D. will contribute three thousand to recognize that, uh, those trucks often go out and do, uh, calls, yeah, in the M.D. So, the agreement is here for, uh, your approval, council.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please?
Can I have a motion? Sorry. I'll make a motion to accept the intermunicipal service agreement as presented.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept the intermunicipal emergency services agreement twenty twenty-five renewal as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Recreation fees policy update. Denise?
Am I leading this whole one? I hope not, Abe.
Why don't you, why don't you introduce it there, Denise?
Pardon me?
Would you like to introduce it?
Um, yeah, I can, okay, so, um, this is a recreation fee policy update, um, for two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-eight, we went with a little bit longer, um, this time, uh, through the description and the discussion options there, um, we've kind of had it set up piece by piece, um, uh, there's also a bunch of attachments, so the first attachment that I would probably like to pull up, um, to go alongside with that one, I don't know if it's possible, is the draft fee schedule, and then we can have the, the other up there.
Can't really have both up at the same time, but you can talk about, which one do you want to go up to first?
Um, so, okay, yeah, if you could. Yeah, so if we can have, I will go through the, the schedule, and then we'll look at the other part if that works. Sorry, it's taking a moment here. Okay, so, um, if we can look at the request or the RFD first, and then I can, if that's up there, then we can read those and we can look at the, the schedule when we get there. So the first piece we have is the page one on the, um, the schedule, A, and that's for, not even the schedule A, pardon me, but, um, sorry, I can't see everything that was on there. So above schedule A, the first page, there's definitions, so there's wording changed by the deposits and the addition of definitions on this, and, perfect. Okay, um, we can remove schedule G, that is not on there anymore, and then with definitions were in place, um, for primetime and non-primetime, just we had someone in the office prefered this, and that wasn't part of the, uh, policy prior, and then nonprofit organization and a profit would have been for, um, businesses, commercial organizations. Then after that, we've got our first of one, um, so in column, uh, twenty twenty-four, everything that is in salmon on that column is the same as from what has been for this past year. Uh, next to it, the first one we have changed is the highlighted eighty-five eighty, and I recommend, or administration recommends that we keep that fee at eighty-five eighty. Uh, within a two-year period, we've raised the fees by ten percent, which is quite considerable, and they have not, minor hockey has not recovered from COVID as of yet, so they haven't received, reached those numbers. Um, after that, the recommendation is a three percent increase for minor hockey, while the other primetime and down would be two point five percent. Uh, tournament rentals would remain the same for the damaged deposit, um, if that works for everybody, then the next one would be, uh, lobby rental, again, two point five percent. The admissions passes, there's no change, but the one thing that we did add to this for this time is to look for a corporate sponsor for the Friday after-school skate times, and that's typically from one to four P.M. on a Friday, and that would not change even if we did, we start having, uh, pond hockey come every Friday at four o'clock. We could make that work, so we would like to add, uh, the corporate sponsors for, um, public skating, then if we continue down, those are still two point five percent changes, but the highlighted one for the concession rental, we'd like to keep Steph Norby at the arena as the concession operator if that possible, if this is a little bit of an incentive to keep her, um, this past year, her, she hasn't made as much money as in previous year, she says her sales are down considerably, which could be due to a number of factors. So that was what that one is for, okay. Sorry. So the next one we're looking at would be, uh, the Claresome Aquatic Center. Now, there are a few different changes on here, we've streamlined some of like the ten passes, um, for child ten passes, and as well, so those would go up a bit this year, but there's seven times a pass, so in a ten punch pass, they pay for seven passes, get three free, so those are basically always on sale for, for those that are in children, that have the children's passes, pardon me. Um, the seniors passes, um, similar scenario, um, but there are eight times for their pass, so they pay forty dollars, and then fourteen times for a three-month pass, so that would be seventy. Again, uh, we would still like to offer their, um, the special down the road. The big change for that is, um, we'd like to add the disability pass, and that would be the same pricing structure as the seniors, but, um, they would have to have an aide with them, and there would be no charge for that aide or caregiver, depending what their title is, as long as they've got some kind of ID with them, um, you know, we're not looking to make it a barrier, we'd like to make sure that they're able to come in without having an extra cost on top of that. And then below that, we've got a family pass again, and then the three-month pass special, we'd like to offer that for the month of May and for the month of December, so that's a three-month pass, so there'd be the summer specials, and then a December wedding, if people want to get in shape, January, February, March, or they would like to give something as a gift for their kids, that's what we'd like to propose, is just to expand that a little bit, and then maybe we can work to sell more for like a six-month or even a year pass, but really use those as an incentive to bring people through the door at the pool. Um, the next one that we've got farther down, as far as a change, everything for the pool goes up about a quarter, and which works out to be about five percent, which is probably higher than anywhere else, that being said, um, we, at the pool, they don't have, um, change like five cents or ten cents, it stays, it stays at twenty-five cents, and then we're also still in line with other centers, which you'll see from the comparison chart. So the next thing that we noticed is our pool rentals, so a pool rental per hour, ninety-six fifty for the year twenty twenty-four, which is fine, but to have another, uh, hour or another lifeguard, the, the increase was quite substantial, someone wanted a two-hour rental for, um, some, with more than forty people in the, at the pool, that would have been a hundred ninety-five dollars. We'd like to amend that and change it to add thirty-five dollars per instructor or per guard, pardon me, that's needed on the deck, so, again, a little more incentive for, um, parents or people wanting to rent the pool, but then it's not such a barrier to, from cost, because most people wouldn't rent for two hours because of the cost, unless it was a special group of some sort. And if you look farther down in the next page, we've done the same thing with the school rental. Uh, school rentals have not changed since two thousand and thirteen, and due to busing and other factors, we really feel that we should try to keep them as low as possible and just encourage them to come out to the pool for swimming, right? Um, so, that hundred dollars for a two-hour rental, we'd like to amend that again to read thirty-five dollars per each guard that is needed for the rental, and it works out, you know, a better price for, for the school. Yeah, and there's no other major changes there besides the swim club, which was above the school rental, and we'd like to add, uh, fifteen, uh, dollar lane fees as opposed to the twenty-five dollar, and part of that is, you know, sometimes there's only been four kids in the pool with swim club, and the potential there, um, from the aquatic coordinator is to fill the pool with other lessons if possible in the evening, um, that's a four to six P.M., which the school, or which the swim club uses, is primetime for, for rentals or for parents who'd like their kids to go into lessons, and it really is about the potential to share this, the, the swimming pool a little bit more, potential versus, that's what's going to happen. And the other one that's not on here, but it must have been, yeah, the swim club pool rental, she was also looking to have that listed as five lanes, and it's possible to have this one, the wrong document opened, so, um, so it would be a pool lane rental, so all five lanes, again, with the potential of having youth come out, um, for swimming lessons between that time period, potential, so, you know, removing barriers and really trying to utilize the pool space and make some money. Next change that we've noticed on here was, uh, or it's on here, is the lessons, and it shows the current format that lessons are in. So what we've done, our lessons are half an hour, forty-five minutes, an hour, sometimes two hours, so instead of charging per group session, say parent and tot or swimmer three, four, we're looking to have a new pricing format, and so thirty minutes times the number of classes, dates of the classes, forty-five minute lessons times the number of classes, and so on. And then another amendment was to ensure that the private lessons were on, um, listed in the policy of only having three maximum in one class. Um, prior to that, it's a, you know, it was informal policy that the Aquatic Center followed to ensure there was only three people, and that's just to keep numbers down, but to make sure someone didn't get a private lesson for cheaper than we could have had a real lesson for. And then adding an additional person up to three people in a class for ten dollars more. And then farther down, we've got JLC drop-in fee, we've been using the, just the hourly fee, but we'd like to have a set drop-in fee for those JLC participants. Am I going too fast, too slow?
You're good.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the Claresome Campground. Okay, so, um, we also have, uh, comparison charts with, uh, attachments that were sent. Um, biggest change is, um, the potential for the fifty amp full service, which will be supposed, set to be, um, put in the summer, and that's the biggest change, so that would be, you know, an extra five dollars on their fees, but the rest of that, it's very much in line with other centers, and it's at two point five percent, um, GST's not included in that. And then the next one down here was just the Claresome Ball Diamonds, and at this time, we only have, uh, local three-day tournament or the, you know, regular local users, and so we've just looked at that and kept it fairly straightforward, I mean, added a five dollars every two years. It's not a major change, but it covers the cost to have, uh, the employees or the park staff get the field ready and make sure it's all cleaned up when they're finished. And then finally, multi-use community building. So when I was looking through the, the fees, um, then I had a conversation with Tracy in the office, and I asked, how often are, are these being rented out to the average person? And I don't believe they are, from what she had said, nobody, unless you're a nonprofit, you're typically not using the facilities at the town office, so just a recommendation to change those prices a little bit, um, just to see if we can get them rented, that's it. Uh, so we see the number in orange is what it would be, um, for profit per day, and then yellow is what the recommendation is, and it's just a little bit less, and it takes that thirty-eight sixty or thirty-nine fifty-seven, and I think it times it by four hours, and just to come up with that. The numbers weren't quite making sense, and if someone rents the facility, then we're a hundred and thirty-eight fifty more than we had before, and same with, uh, council chambers, and it's only fifty dollars, but, you know, if we show that, you know, we're interested in having people rent the facility, you know, maybe that is a bit of initiative that we can, you know, it's affordable, but you also have these perks, right, so? And I believe that was, that, and then the fire hall was the last one. And that's again, two point five percent, and it's likely the two thousand and twenty-six numbers will probably not be used, um, because he will be getting his addition on there with all, everything goes well, and then he's also said the same thing, he hasn't, hasn't rented the buildings or the space out to anyone that is not a not-for-profit, so that's just a, just a little piece of information for everybody. Okay, that's... Questions?
Questions?
Perfect. Okay.
Counselor Cannon?
Pretty minor things, thanks Denise, that's, looks like a frickin' ton of work.
Let's just take a little bit.
Yeah. Uh, uh, on the minor hockey thing, I don't know why we're tic-tacking around a three percent versus a two and a half percent, I, I think it'd be easier, in my opinion, just to, you know, if you leave them as they are, and then a couple years down the road, make them two and a half percent like everything else, like, rather than bumping on an extra half a percent just because we left them as they were.
Okay, so what would you? Okay, so what would you like to see there? You would just like to see it to, the same as everything else?
Well, leave them flat for this year, for next year, like you're proposing. But then rather than giving them the extra rider at 3%, just do them 2.5% like you're doing everybody else.
That's fair.
You know, that, that pretty minor thing. The other piece I had was on, and this never comes up, but in this council room, if it was to rent, does it include the tech? Because that's a market that I could see that the odd place might want to have to come in and, and do a big Zoom with their group or whatever, and the tech to me would be the win on that.
Yeah, no, I believe it does include the tech, although I don't know how that's set up on this side as far as instructions on how to use the tech or what the expectations are for the renter.
Okay, so that would be the tricky thing, is, is getting a little instruction for the renter. But I, those would be my, those are my only two comments.
Yeah, and I think it still shows that it's still, you know, higher, definitely higher because of the technology and then the potential for, you know, things to go wrong, I guess, if you've got a lot of electronics in a room, yeah.
Counselor Zimmer?
I would just like to know, how come we don't rent our ball diamonds out for out-of-town or tournaments since 2009?
So I have a letter somewhere in a file that says, in 2009, Chris Holback was still here, there was a group out of Oka Tokes that had rented the diamonds, the Millennium Park, and I think they had something to do with maybe camping, maybe not, but they also had the, the community center. Anyway, it was a big old mess, there was something about, do you remember this one, Crane? Was there like? It was a long time ago, but it was so bad. I think there was campfires where they shouldn't be, there was broken bottles, there was a real mess. And they, after that, the town kind of went into the informal policy of not renting out the facilities. I'd like to see them rented out myself. But it is a lot of work, and our diamonds, we need to make sure we have the shale upgraded before we do that.
So that is something we could look into then? What it would?
It'd be, yeah, it wouldn't be bad.
Cost, what you would need, a list of rules or something like that to get them rented out to help offset costs and stuff?
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Counselor Kettler?
I got a couple of questions. Did minor hockey come to the council and ask for us not to raise the prices?
They did.
And we said, no, we're going to raise the prices?
Yeah, because it was after the fact.
And now we're not going to raise the prices?
No, we're not going to raise them next year. They asked that we rescind it for the one that we, we put in. And, and we decided to leave things, leave the, leave the last years in place, and now the proposal here is, it stays the same.
I believe that was August of last summer, yeah.
Can we go back to the swimming pool one, please? So here's my concern, we run all these facilities at a loss, and now we're taking income away, I just don't understand it. I understand groups and organizations have a hard side of, I, I get that, but we already run these things at a loss. So I need, I need the, keep going. Right there, school rental. Can you explain that to me, please?
Why it's only at $50 per hour?
Well, so you got the one that's highlighted orange with 100.
Okay, so if there was a, if the school came in, typically they come in with about 30 kids. Are we have chance that they come in with 60 kids for that hour? Instead of the $50, we would be charging them $100. But that's what, so, that's because they're over 40. So there's a ratio chart in your, in the file and your attachments. So with that, so that for $50, they get two guards basically for 40 people. So if we have 60 people, we need another guard, they're now paying $85 for that hour. I always had a hard time billing for the 100, and we rarely, rarely, rarely ever saw it. Because every time you billed the school a little bit more than before, example, $100 for an hour versus 50, sometimes the teachers were paying that out of their pocket for the end of the year, because the school would only allow so much. So changing this, it gives them the ability to charge for, so, I'm trying to think how to say it. So it would be, instead of for two hours, if we had 60 kids, they were there for two hours, we would be charging $85 an hour versus $50 an hour. So that 85 would be $190 versus, no, $170, my math's wrong. $170 for that two hours versus $200. So it's a little bit cheaper, but...
But we're adding a staff member.
We're adding, so if there was an extra, if there was 85 people, then we'd have another staff member. So now we've already, we've raised it, so it was a recommendation from the aquatic coordinator, and I actually think it makes sense when you're billing, because it is quite, you know, so we have a two-hour rental with 60 kids, they're looking at $400. So this allows us to say, okay, it's not going to cost you that much. It is $170 or whatever.
Just go up one more screen, please.
This way?
We run the right way or the other way?
No, I think. I don't know, oh yeah, right there.
Yes?
Yeah.
So a rental at our pool that has no amenities for two hours with, you know, four guards, we're looking at, yeah, 400, almost $400 for two hours. It didn't make sense, it doesn't job with other communities either. We don't have any other amenities at the pool besides the pool and the diving board and the hot tub when it's running.
But we're, okay, I'm not going to argue this fact. I get it, I get the numbers, but I guess it's costing us that much money to run it. I, I just don't know how we can, yeah, I just don't.
Well, because it just, it works out then that if someone comes in with 100 people, I have to look at the, the ratio, then we would be paying more, they would, they would be paying more. It just, yeah, I can see what you're saying, it was just more, it doesn't make sense to charge them almost $400 for a two-hour rental. Then nobody ever, nobody does it, nobody does it.
Doesn't make sense to charge less to take more of a loss to keep the, like you said, the school division hours have never changed since whatever.
Since 2013.
Money, even though they're still...
We've never, we haven't, because they don't spend that, that's the whole point. They see that it's, it's prohibitive, it's a barrier for service. So if they're not going to rent it, why do we have it?
Has it decreased?
The...
Rentals, the school rentals?
Um, the school rentals, yeah, they have decreased. So we're not getting as many, last year we didn't get as many in June. Usually that's when our rental rental time, and that's different than school lessons, right? But our rentals, yeah, they used to have like grade ones, grade twos, grade threes, grade fours, grade fives, and even in the high school, but we don't get those anymore. We get a few of those last year, we haven't seen the high schools since before COVID.
I get it, I just think it comes with the cost of the town all the time. So that's where I struggle.
And I, I, you know, in a lot of ways, I agree with you, Mr. Kettler.
Mister.
If, if we are going to cut some, some of these rates though, I think it'd be, you know, we're doing that to get more people through the doors. And, and so I, I would hope that we'll track that a little bit and see if it's actually successful in getting more people through the doors, so we can make some informed decisions a year, two years.
Yeah, no, and that's fair, right? And we'd have to take a look back in our records to find out, and I'm not even sure that would all be on laser fish now. But we'd have to take a look at our records to find out who is over. You know, so it's like, some groups are totally great with it, it's not a, not a major issue, but usually people are like, oh, we can only do an hour.
Yeah, and I'm not worried about the history, the history is the history. I was just, we make the changes this year. Going forward, if we ask a year from now, you know,
We need to know those numbers.
Was it an 10% increase, was it, what, what, was this a successful approach, kind of thing? And I think it goes with the baseball diamonds or anything that we're, we're looking at fiddling around with, right?
Absolutely, and that totally makes sense, thank you, Ed.
I'm not going to pick on you for any fees here, but the building deposit for the cleaning and the fob, I kind of think you should separate those. The cleaning fee should be a fee that you pay because there, every time we come in for a meeting and I put out tables, they're still dirty, like they haven't been wiped down, they haven't been cleaned, and honestly, it needs a little bit of attention, so.
So I think that one goes back to, and that's fair. So that cleaning, the fob and the cleaning fee in the community room, that was something that was there before myself. And I looked at that too, because I know I wipe the tables off in the community room back there, right? And the same thing, when you sit down, you're like, oh, someone ate their dinner there, that's great. So I think that goes back to some of, how do we manage it on our administrative end? What is the responsibility of a renter who's coming into the facility? You know, there's, we make sure that there's a cleaning wipes, there's a clean spray bottle with some cleaning stuff. We're not looking for anything extensive. If there's a mess on the floor, you clean it up. And, you know, if you're, use the tables, wipe them, right? I, I don't think it has to be anything extreme, it just has to have some kind of procedure in place that can be followed really easily by user groups.
You can put whatever procedure in place you want if there's not a cost associated with it, people won't follow.
Well, I think we can just go with the $50 for the cleaning fob. I mean, the expectation that a, a user group is going to clean your facility is a really great one, I know when we use, you know, like the lodge room or the curling rink, for example, a few weeks back, we made sure that the space was clean, but, you know, not everybody, unless you walk through it and someone takes ownership of that, they're not, that doesn't mean that they're going to do it. And that's a tough one, right? So how do you dictate to a user group that they need to follow these steps? You know, ultimately, it falls back on us to make sure those things are done. Any other questions?
Concerns?
You might be down in the hot seat.
How much for just the hot tub?
I don't know if it's working.
Way to bring that one up.
See, and actually, you'd still have to have your regular admission. You know, seniors rate at the Clarisome Aquatic Center starts at 55, starts at 55, just saying.
Oh no.
Can I have a motion? Counselor Meister? Question?
Okay, so, sorry, I just need to clarify this. Like, are you adopting it as she's presented, or is there any changes?
Nope, as presented.
Moved by Counselor Meister to adopt policy number 5.7.10, the recreation fees policy as presented effective March 10th, 2025.
All in favor?
Thank you.
6. E, Texas 4000 for cancer request. Abe?
So Texas for Cancer is a fundraising cycling event. That happens pretty much every year. Didn't happen a couple of years during COVID, but essentially some students from, some university students from Texas do a bike ride up to Alaska. And usually there's 20 to 30 students that come through town, and Clarisome's on their route, and one of their stops is Clarisome. And so normally they reach out to, it's actually Counselor Carlson, who usually hosted them with a couple of meals. And he usually brings this, brings us forward, but he's no longer out with the restaurant. And so while they've been in touch with our recreation manager to coordinate, they would like to come through again this year, Monday, June 23rd, and that's the 38th day of their ride. And historically, what they, what they've asked at the town is to have us free camping at the campground and some showers. And also for administration to coordinate a backup place to stay, usually that's the library, in case the weather's really miserable. June 23rd could be miserable.
They've stayed at the library before.
Yeah, yeah, so I think historically, kind of July 2nd or something, first week of July is when they come through, so. But the, I believe the restaurant is working, and the owners are going to work with them and kind of do the, do what was previously done and provide a couple of meals for them and send them on their way. And so just looking for a motion, as we have in the past few years, for council to approve the group to stay at Centennial Park Campground for free, and for us to coordinate an alternative place to stay as well.
Questions, concerns? Motion, please? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to allow the Texas 4000 for Cancer Rockies group to stay in Centennial Park Campground for one night on June 23rd, 2025, for free of charge to support their cause of raising funds and awareness for cancer research. For the Clarisome Public Library to be offered as a bad-weather alternative and for administration to facilitate their stay.
All in favor? 6. F, point one, summer markets.
Abe? So looking for, bringing a new idea to council here and looking for some direction. But our community engagement coordinator is looking at doing downtown open markets. And would like to know council's thoughts and direction on possib, the possibility of doing that. So looking at bringing people down to Adamson Park weekly. There has been, our engagement coordinator is very connected with market, market people, people who do markets, who do open markets, and has had a lot of interest in the past couple of years in people coming to Clarisome and people already in Clarisome having some kind of market. And so, um, so we're looking at, at setting that up every Tuesday from 1:00 to 5:00 at Adamson Park. The intention there would be to bring foot traffic to, to the town town court, promote local, local vendors and artisans, and get some foot traffic in, in the town center and use Adamson as it was, as intended to use and bring bodies down there. This would sync, promote local tourism and sync with the state play tourism initiative. The open market is not the same as a farmer's market. We do have a farmer's market, a provincially approved farmer's market in town. And so these, these would be feature artisan, low-risk food products, breads and jams, and, and crafts, things like that. Traditional farmer's markets are more food table, vegetables, and maybe some high-risk, high-risk food markets or food products. And so proposing to do this every week throughout the summer and as a, as a way to generate revenue, the, the amount of work and, and cost to the town in, in homelessness would be limited. There'd be some use of the facilities, the washrooms. But generally speaking, these markets, market providers would bring their own table, their own tents, all their own supplies, and they would pay an admission fee. And we're expecting to collect somewhere between $300 to $600 in admissions for every market. And the idea there is that that could offset, that, that money could go towards town events and could offset some of the costs and requests that we have for local businesses who regularly contribute to sponsor town events. And we have had some feedback that some businesses are getting a little tapped with sponsoring. So this is a, this is kind of a way around that, is an alternate way to generate revenue. That is an important part of our town events every year is, is the sponsorship and finding alternative funding. Currently, that's an important part of the structure. I could always change. It counts, it interests in having a discussion. Alternatively, without that fundraising, arguably, we just have some kind of other revenue source, general taxation comes along to it, so. What am I missing here? I think I'd get to many points, council. We believe that this would not be competitive with farmer's market because it is different, it is something different. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we did have a couple of, of markets. And at that time, we felt like they could both survive. They wouldn't have to, one wouldn't have to limit the other, just have to schedule accordingly. And so we actually couldn't come to an agreement with those groups. So we just had the... Um, so we just had the, um, the actual farmer's market, uh, carried on, maybe human, so. You can ask questions or stop any time during, uh, council. Um, I think of probably the main points, uh, we would be looking to to do these markets, uh, May long until, uh, the end of September, uh, here Tuesday.
So they would hold, one would hold on a Tuesday and the other market would be on the Wednesday?
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Meister?
I have a couple of, I guess you could say, concerns about this. I agree with the fundraising part of it. That's one way to look at it and to raise some money because businesses are getting tapped. I had a few conversations today and, uh, Old Fashioned Christmas came up, how everybody thought that that would drive the corridor downtown, but everybody kind of bypassed downtown and just went to the market, did their thing and went home. So that's one of the issues. I also sit on a committee who is also contemplating the same idea, not as frequently as this. But I just, to me, it seems like, I don't think the Economic Development Office should be running a market.
Not the Economic Development.
Community Engagement, but but she's part of the economic, but that's just my concerns.
Counselor Kettler?
I had the same hesitations when I read it, but, um, dealing with economic development, dealing with, uh, self-growth, dealing with all this, tourism is one of the biggest things. And it's amazing how many people make their plans throughout the week of where to stop for which different markets every, every little town has. I'm always asked all the time, what is a town doing to raise money for these special events that they're always having and those types of things? I think it's a great way to generate that and bring things downtown. I am not disputing that the Old Fashioned Christmas doesn't draw a lot of down, but it's cold, right? In the wintertime, that's the crappy part about Old Fashioned Christmas. Uh, it's been an argument for seven years. Well, nobody sticks around because it's cold. So I, I, I didn't really be, wasn't a big fan because of the farmer's market and because of the other markets that go on, but it is a different base. It has a different, and there's an opportunity to bring a little bit of a different eclectic kind of process to the downtown core. I, I like the idea of how it brings people to town and brings them to to walk around and stuff like that with the different stuff, but, I mean, there's only one way to find out if it works, so.
Guess that brings up another thing I forgot was the timing of it. Those of us who do work downtown and don't get off till five o'clock, it's something that we can't attend, so maybe making it a little hour later would be good.
I like the timing and location where it's at because it's right behind my office and I can go there anytime.
Any other question, concerns?
That would be a great idea because the other one runs from one to six, six, three, six? Okay. And this one's one to five, so.
Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Kettler, question?
Moved by Counselor Kettler to direct administration to coordinate open markets at Amundson Park on Tuesdays from one to five P M. starting May twentieth until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as a means to increase tourism as an a, as a fundraising effort for future events.
All in favor? Approved, posed? Approved. Information brief. Extended producer responsibility. Abe?
So, uh, there is a new, uh, program, recycling program, uh, and regulatory framework coming to the province. It's called Extended Producer Responsibility. Uh, it's designed to shift responsibility from managing recyclable waste materials from these valleys and taxpayers, um, to the producers who introduce these materials sent to the marketplace. And so the program aims to enhance recycling and waste. The program began on November thirty, twenty twenty-two with a full pool of, uh, schedule for April first, twenty twenty-five. Several other provinces, provinces already have, uh, similar programs in place. And so this program is designed to manage packaging and paper products, uh, including single-use items, packaging materials, uh, paper products and HSP, which are hazardous and special products, which covers household hazardous waste, such as chemicals requiring specialized, uh, disposal. And so under the, uh, EPR program, producers willing to establish a fund collection and recycling system, meet specific recycling performance targets and educate consumers on proper waste disposal. So administration has been working with, uh, a group called Circular Materials. They are the ones in in the province who are actually overseeing this turnover, this new program. The EPR program, uh, province-wide, it's actually a pretty big undertaking. And so E three sixty is our, um, E three sixty environmental, is our current, um, recycling, uh, group. And they collect the residential and commercial, uh, recycling. So, uh, I guess, long and the short of it.
I'm, this is the interesting part.
The long and the short of it is, uh, that the residents will no longer have to pay for, uh, the recycling. It will still be, um, E three sixty who is doing it. It's going to look exactly the same. Um, but the residents, uh, are are no longer paying. Commercial entities will still have to, uh, pay for that. Um, and so there will be a change in the billing. We will be bringing those, uh, changes, uh, to council uh, for conversation, um, at a future audit and finance, uh, at a planning meeting. Um, but we are working through the, um, fee structures right now, but those fees will come off the, uh, residential, um, bills, those recycling fees.
There you go, Mike.
The promise given, the promise taken?
Well, I read it three times and I was trying to figure out, like, okay, well, this is information, but it's not information because we're being told we're doing this. And they're taking something off my bill? I'm like, I don't understand. What's going on? What's going on here? And they're going to pick up our house waste? Is that like paint?
Um, yeah.
I didn't see any.
Hazardous and special products. Uh, I'll have to get back to you on, uh, what exactly those special products cover.
I've had a lot of those questions around disposal and that stuff too. It just, it kind of, it looked too good to be true. Uh, I was just kind of waiting to see what happened, but.
And we make sixteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month.
Yep, because we have some bins that they'll be picking up for us, so.
The only question I had, I don't know if we know, so we went to E three sixty because they were able to take more products for us than our previous one. What does circular materials do with all the stuff that E three sixty, do they still recycle the same amount of stuff or do they recycle less and landfill more?
Yeah, I know. They'll recycle the same amount. It's intended to just, uh, carry on the existing, uh, program.
E, E three sixty is still picking up the product.
Right.
Yeah.
But then do they not deliver it to circular materials?
I don't know how, I don't know how that, uh, it's managed up at the, at the recycling depot. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think it's just who's paying. I think producers are kicking in the money. I think the actual handling of all the product and stuff on the back end is the same.
Well, I, I have the same question is, can I still throw the same stuff in my recycling bin? Or is it just paper? Can I still throw my tin cans in there? Can I still throw my recycling in there or does that have to be separated? Because this is just paper products.
And I believe that gets sorted up top.
That?
Yeah.
They pick it up, they do the same, they figure it out?
Yeah.
I don't get it, man.
This is still like the model that we use, E three sixty, it's about, it's what we use right now, so, circular, right?
Yeah.
But you're not a little bit hesitant that we're going to get the same service and not have to pay for it?
Somebody's paying for it, just not us.
Producers pay for it.
Producers are paying for it.
Newspapers.
We all good? Council resolution status. Don't think anything's changed there, Abe?
Yeah, any questions on that?
Information items. Any questions, concerns? Could I have a motion to accept the information items?
I have a motion to accept the information items?
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt any information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera, please? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to go in camera at eight forty P M. for the following item, foist section nineteen, confidential evaluations.
We are in camera.
All in favor?
Cam, oh, all in favor? Camera off, please? Motion to come out of in camera, please?
I'll make a motion to come out of in camera.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to come out of in camera at eight fifty-two P M.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to?
I'll make a motion to nominate David Knox for the museum board.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettler to appoint David Knox to the Claris Home Museum Board.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer that the meeting adjourned at eight fifty-three P M.
All in favor? Camera off?